Good evening. On behalf of the Commissioners and staff, I'd like to welcome all of you to the April 28th, 2022 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meetings. If you could at this time, put all of your electronic devices on silent. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table. If you plan to speak at tonight's meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and return it to the staff table. And as a reminder, the Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and replayed throughout the week on Consolidated Communications and Comcast. And with that, I will now call the meeting to order. Lupe, could I please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Brashears.
Here.
Commissioner Caparuso.
Here.
Commissioner Covington is absent, excused. Commissioner Hagan-Jose.
Here.
Commissioner Pryor is absent, excused. Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
And Chair Jensen.
Here. If you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lupe, could we please begin with staff introductions?
Yes, good evening Commissioners. Lupe Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Good evening Commissioners. Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening Chair Jensen and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Chair Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Commissioners, Scarlett Marr, Associate Planner.
And good evening.
Matt Todd, Principal Engineer.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. The public comment period is the time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to address the Commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by members of the audience, the Planning Commission, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of two items. Item 5.1 is the minutes from the March 24th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting and item 5.2 is infill parcel 287, plaster food bake pantry-to-go distribution conditional use permit for 1401 Church Street and for the record file number PL 220041. Is there anyone on the Commission or in the audience who would like to pull one of those items off the consent calendar for separate discussion? Okay, again seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Martin has made the motion. Commissioner Caparuso has seconded the motion. Can we have a roll call?
Vice Chair Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso.
Yes.
Commissioner Brashears.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan-Jose.
Yes.
And Chair Jensen.
Yes.
The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for item 5.2. Okay, moving on to requests and presentations. Before I begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. First, we'll hear the staff presentation. Then I'll take questions from the Commission. I'll then open up the public hearing and the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation. I will then open the public comment period and the public will have an opportunity to speak. We'll then close the public comment period and the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal if necessary. I'll then close the public hearing. The Commission may ask questions of staff and finally the Commission will consider this item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony that was presented at tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request to approve a tentative subdivision map, a tree permit, and a design review permit for residential subdivision for 121 E Street for the record file number PL 21-0306. And Scarlett, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes. Thank you Chair Jensen and good evening Commissioners. My name is Scarlett Marr. I'm an Associate Planner and I'm here this evening to present to you all the E Street duplex project. So the project as outlined in red is located within the city's infill parcel area, specifically on Lot 107. It's bounded by E Street to the west, existing residents to the north and east as well as the south, and an alley immediately to the east of the project site. The project site is approximately .35 acres in size. It has the line use designation of medium density residential as well as a zoning designation of two-family residential. Currently, the site is developed with a single-family dwelling unit and a shed, both which are proposed to be removed upon approval of the project and one single oak tree on the site. The requested entitlements before you tonight, which are listed on the slide, would allow the development of a duplex as well as an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit on each lot for a total of eight units for the entire project site. The first entitlement, which is a tentative subdivision map, would subdivide the existing parcel into two lots, creating lots one and two. The newly created lots would measure approximately 51 feet in width by 160 feet in depth and both parcels would front off of E Street and have a rear access off of the alley. The proposed parcels are both of sufficient size and shape to accommodate the proposed development and are consistent with the applicable zoning and design requirements with the exception of the minimum lot width. So in addition to the tentative subdivision map, the applicant is requesting an administrative variance to allow deviation from the minimum lot width in the R2 development standard, which is 60 feet. Given its location of the project, the project site is located within infill area of the city and most of the parcels within the area actually do not meet the minimum lot width currently in the R2 development standards. Most lots are about approximately 50 feet in width, so similar to the proposed development for this project. This means that the newly created lots, which would be consistent with other properties in the area, would actually not meet the current R2 development standards and as such, the applicant is requesting an administrative variance to deviate from the minimum lot width. So in addition, they are requesting a design review permit for residential subdivision. This would mean that the duplex as well as the junior accessory dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit would both mirror modern architectural styles, which consist of horizontal and vertical lines as well as siding, stucco, and metal awnings and a sloped roof. The height, bulk, size, and arrangement of the duplex are both consistent with the existing residential buildings in the area and the mix of colors, materials, and overall design of the buildings are consistent with the city's community design guidelines. The last permit is a tree permit being requested. Currently, as you can see on the slide, there are three oak trees closest to the southern property line. Those oak trees are off-site. There is one oak tree on-site, but due to the close proximity of the three off-site oak trees, the applicant did his best to design around the trees to ensure less impact to those trees. And as such, the design of the duplex requires that the single oak tree on the site be removed to ensure that the three oak trees off-site are preserved during construction and anything thereafter. So as such, the applicant proposes to remove the single oak tree and preserve the three oak trees off-site as well as pay mitigation fees for the removal of the oak trees through the payment of in-lu fees. So early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website as well as the public hearing notices were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the project site and then published in the Press Tribune as well as the Arcona website again. No public comments were received. And consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15303 for new construction of small structures as well as Section 15332 for infill development projects and the city's sequel implementing procedures. In conclusion, staff finds the project allows the beneficial use of the site and is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance as well as the general plan and the city's community design guidelines and the required findings of approval can be made to approve the project. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the required findings of fact and approve the tentative subdivision map, an administrative variance, a design review permit for residential subdivision, and a tree permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you Scarlett. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and invite the project representatives to come forward to address the Commission.
Hi, my name is Wes. I'm just here to answer any questions you guys may may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
I think maybe just back to staff, sorry.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
The, I'm having a hard time sort of envisioning the density on this property because I know that we're, you know, looking at kind of going beyond recommended setbacks and so it's hard for me to picture, if that makes sense, you know, how this is going to fit on this space and what this kind of precedent may set.
If, could we go back to the slides? I believe it's the first slide with the project location. That might help give you an idea. So if you, within this neighborhood, if you look at the lots and it's kind of hard to see on this overhead, it's a little, it doesn't show quite as clearly. But if you look at the lot lines on this property, the proposed subdivision going down to 51 and a half feet wide, that's really the variance, is going from 60 feet to 51 and a half feet. It does meet all the setback requirements. So all the other development standards are met. In the R2 zone, you'll see most of the lots, both north and south on E Street and then also between the alley and D Street, are 50 feet wide. The vast majority of lots are the size that these lots are being proposed to be subdivided on. Now, if you take that into account, you'll see a lot of, like just this lot south, 127 and 127 and a half. You'll see, you'll see, you'll see two addresses on a lot.
A and B.
So in this area, in the R2 zone, you're allowed to have two primary units on a parcel. And with recent changes to ADU law.
Right.
You're allowed to have an ADU. So that, on each of those R2 lots. And then because it's a junior accessory dwelling unit, you're also allowed, if you can fit it in, because it's a much smaller, like 500 square foot, I think is the limit. You guys jump in if I get something wrong here. It's a much smaller footprint, it's really a studio apartment. You're allowed to have a junior accessory dwelling unit. So within this neighborhood, the lots that already have two units hypothetically could come in and ask for an additional unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit. So what they're proposing is the maximum that you could build in this zone, in this neighborhood.
Right. Can we pull that back up really quick?
Yeah.
Can I jump, can I jump in to just add something?
Yeah.
So on the table one, also the lot coverage is only 26% of the lot on each of the units. So as far as placement of the units.
Instead of 40.
Yeah. So it is a larger lot element which they're dividing. And on top of that, they're stacking elements and the junior ADU is a 500 square foot on the plan. And so you're condensing the elements. There's a lot of components here, but it's condensed and it's.
The only, the only thing out of compliance is the width.
Yeah, correct.
And so the, so the density, I think you guys have the, have the density, the units per acre. I'm, I'm not necessarily talking specifically about the density, but just how it fits into the neighborhood. This style of development for R2 lots is what we, what we can expect. And it does, it isn't really out of character with, with the rest of the neighborhood. So I think it's the way they've designed it with these, this very deep, 150-foot deep lot with the ADU way in the back, quite a bit of yard in the middle. And it's really, what it comes down to is the duplex, you know, it's a two-story duplex and then the JADU has kind of fit into that. So it's a, it's a component. So it seems like more units than I think it'll feel like as far as the building mass.
Well, and I think, I mean, this is something that, well, you all are going to see more of, I guess.
Yeah.
And I do, by all means, I like, the elevation looks great. I think it's, the concept's great. It's just, it's hard to envision.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was, you answer my questions.
Yeah.
Before we go back to the applicant, is there any other questions that the Commission has of staff? Make sure I get this right this time. It doesn't look like it. Is there any questions to the applicant? Okay, well, you can head and be seated. And now I'll go ahead and open up the public comment period and this is the time for anyone in the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing as well at the same time. Is there any other questions or comments that the Commission would like to make before proposing a motion? Okay, seeing no questions, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that the Commission take the following actions. Adopt the three findings of fact and approve the tentative subdivision map subject to 50 conditions of approval. Adopt three findings of fact and approve the administrative variance. Adopt the two findings of fact and approve the designer view permit for residential subdivision subject to 24 conditions of approval. And finally, adopt the two findings of fact and approve the tree permit subject to 20 conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Brashears has made the motion and Commissioner Martin is second. We have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Brashears.
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin.
Yes.
Hagan-Jose.
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso.
Yes.
And Chair Jensen.
Yes, the motion is approved and there is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, it's a request to approve a major project permit stage one modification and major project permit stage two modification for 1485 Blue Oaks Boulevard and for the record file number PL 22-0047. And Sean, can we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. Good evening Chair Jensen and Commissioners. My name is Sean Morales. I'm an Associate Planner and I'm here tonight to present the Campus Oaks 711 Project. The project is located within the Campus Oaks Town Center Development at the southeast corner of Blue Oaks Boulevard and Roseville Parkway. The town center is the commercial portion of the Campus Oaks Master Plan and was approved through the Major Project Permit, or MPP, process in 2018. An MPP stage one was approved for the building footprints and stage two approved building elevations for nine out of the 16 buildings in the development, including the fuel station. An MPP stage one modification and stage two modification are now requested to allow the development of a fuel station and convenience/restaurant building that will be occupied by 711. As shown on the slide here, the proposal includes similar setbacks from both frontages, both road frontages to what was originally approved. The building area will be reduced by approximately 1,900 square feet and the applicant has compensated for this reduction by including an outdoor seating area with a trellis to the south of the building. The fuel canopy will be expanded to accommodate two additional fuel pumps. As with the original approval, the access from Blue Oaks Boulevard, highlighted here in red, is not within the boundaries of the project property. However, this access is necessary for the site and has been made a condition of approval. When the applicant constructs the driveway, they will need a right of entry from that property owner. Speculative elevations were approved for the fuel station in 2018 in the modern agrarian style, which is consistent with the design concept for the overall Campus Oaks Town Center. And modified elevations are proposed to suit the 711 project. To match the overall agrarian theme, the elevations include traditionally agrarian materials such as vintage wood cedar panels on all elevations and metal accent siding on the south entrance. Modern materials such as stucco siding and a large glass storefront system are also incorporated into the design. The applicant also proposes an aluminum composite fuel canopy with paint and metal panels to match the building as well. Landscaping for the center was approved with the original MPP and the project will maintain the approved London plane trees along Blue Oaks Boulevard and red sunset maples along Roseville Parkway. And overall, the landscape plan is consistent with the plant palette used throughout the Campus Oaks Town Center development and will provide adequate texture, screening, and shading for the project site. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website and the public hearing notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet, published in the Press Tribune and again on the Arcona website. An addendum was prepared for the, an addendum to the HP Master Plan EIR was prepared for the overall Town Center development and the 711 project was found to be substantially consistent with that previous evaluation and no further environmental review was required. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed project is, modifications are substantially consistent with the intent of the original approval and that the project complies with the all-applicable goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, general plan, Campus Oaks Master Plan, and community design guidelines. Therefore, staff recommends that the Commission adopt the required findings of fact and approve the entitlements as listed on this slide. And I am available for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff at this time?
I've got one question.
Okay.
So it notes in, in your report, it talks about two restaurants inside the building. Is that including like the 711 plus a, like a taco shop or something? Or is it two restaurants besides the 711? Because it states that they're about 1,500 square feet apiece. And with this being, I think it's 4,700 square feet, you could have three components here. But I was just wondering for clarification.
Yeah, and the applicant.
That's even known, I don't, and it might be the applicant.
The applicant can speak more to the programming, but it'll be the 711 convenience market and then two kind of restaurants with the open area in front that kind of includes the market. Yeah. I think they're 1,500 total, not each.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and invite the project representative for this item to come forward and address the Commission.
Good evening Chair Jensen and members of the Commission. Ryan Hooper with Thatch and Hooper here this evening representing SKW Roseville LLC. With me is Bruce Danley, Project Partner, as well as Scott Pedersen with Morton and Patala. Should be able to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project. By way of quick background, as mentioned, this project was substantially approved in 2018 with the original project entitlements. The use was established as was the basic layout and design. Not a lot is changing, but we're back before you this evening to make some modifications because at that time, we didn't know who the user was going to be. We now know that 711 is the user and we're making modifications to the prior approvals to fit their company design and additional modifications that I'll outline in a moment. As you know, much of the center is developed out now. It looks quite sharp. We are proposing to tie into that design with identical colors and materials selected from the original palette that was approved. So we are working to be part of the cohesive overall Campus Oaks design. I wanted to also mention the fact that, as it was discussed, there's a modification to the building size. It's about 2,000 square feet less. And I want to pick up on the restaurant question. I think originally, when we first set out and filed the application, we were looking at two restaurant options. That has since changed. We are looking at one. And it's a, it's a 711 concept that they have started to unroll throughout the country. It's called Laredo Taco. I would most closely point to like Chipotle as an example. So it would be cooked, quick serve, but fresh, freshly cooked and prepared food. So just one restaurant comprising about 2,000 square feet between the restaurant and the seating areas. To make up for the loss in building footprint, what we now are proposing that wasn't part of the original application is a very attractive outdoor trellis dining area for patrons to enjoy a meal or a cup of coffee, heavily landscaped and I think a nice place for people to relax. So that is, that is new. In addition, there are two pumps over the original approval. So now there are eight. And then the, the site plan modifications, just the driveway entrance and some of the configurations to fit the new composting requirements have also been modified. With that, we have staff support. We're in full accord with the conditions of approval. We urge your approval of the project and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions that you have of the applicant at this time? You start at this end?
No.
Seeing none, any down here?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and be seated. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do so? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing as well. Commissioners, is there any questions that you have of staff or any comments you'd like to make before we seek a motion?
So I'd just like to offer that it's great to see that Campus Oaks site just continue to further develop. And I know, living on the West Side, it's really nice to see that activity happening.
Anything else? I agree, I think this is a good project. I think it fits in very well and I think it's consistent with what was there before. So look for a motion from the Commission.
I'll move to adopt the two findings of fact and approve the major project permit stage one modification subject to eight conditions of approval. And adopt the two findings of fact and approve the major project permit stage two modification subject to eight conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Caparuso has made a motion. Commissioner Hagan-Jose has seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Caparuso.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan-Jose.
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brashears.
Yes.
And Chair Jensen.
Yes.
And Chair Jensen?
Yes. So the motion is approved and there's a 10-day appeal period for this item. Okay, the last item on the agenda is item 6.3. It's a request to consider the addendum to the Sierra Vista specific plan EIR, recommend that the city council approve the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, rezone, second amendment to the Moyer Investments LLC Development Agreement, second amendment to the DF Properties Development Agreement, fifth amendment to the West Park Federico Development Agreement, and that the planning commission approve the large lot tentative subdivision map, the small lot tentative subdivision map, and design review for residential subdivision for 3801 Santucci Boulevard, and for the record, file number PL 21-0223. Shelby, can we have your presentation, please?
You may. Good evening, Chair Jensen and Commissioners. My name is Shelby Maples, associate planner, and I have a presentation for you on the JMC tentative map four project. The proposed project affects several large lot parcels within the Sierra Vista specific plan area. The requested entitlements will allow the development of 516 single-family residential units on the CO parcels, which are shown grouped here on the western side of the plan area along Santucci Boulevard. The project also includes land use and zoning modifications for parcels FD 24, 32, 41, and JM 1 and 20, and DF 20. As you can see here, the project includes a number of entitlements, which we'll go through on the following slides. The project includes a general plan amendment to modify the land use within the plan area. The project, as proposed, reconfigures several large lot parcels and transfers units within the plan area, which necessitates the land use changes. Parcel CO 22 will change from medium-density residential to low-density residential. Parcel FD 7 will change from low-density to medium-density. And the boundary of FD 32, which is an H, high-density residential parcel, and FD 41, a community commercial parcel, will be modified to reduce the high-density acreage on FD 32 and increase the community commercial acreage on FD 41. The overall number of units within the plan will remain the same. Overall, the project modification will result in a decrease of low-density residential with a matching increase in medium-density, as well as a decrease in high-density land and increase in community commercial. And it's noted that the discrepancy in acreage for the HDR and community commercial is right A specific plan amendment is also requested to reflect the proposed land use changes and to allow the transfer of the units. Here you can see throughout the affected parcels that LDR units will decrease by 197 units, MDR will increase by 223, and HDR will increase by 14. This increase to the MDR and HDR units also captures the transfer of 40 units from that parcel FD 41, which presently has a community commercial mixed-use land use. It'll be modifying that land use designation to remove the mixed-use overlay and reallocate the units. In addition, the project proposes modifications to the affordable housing allocation within the plan area. This includes the transfer of middle-income purchase units from parcel CO 20, that's 34 units, and DF 20, for a total of four units, for overall a total of 38 units, to new parcel FD 32B, which is an HDR lot. As the minimum required density on HDR parcels is 13 dwelling units per acre, the primary development type that occurs on HDR parcels is multifamily apartments. So in order to allow that transfer of the 38 units and make their future development feasible, units will also be converted from the middle-income purchase units to 19 low and 19 very-low income rental units. Staff supports the proposed transfer as the city is currently in a deficit for housing units in these categories and the Federico Development Agreement will also be modified to reflect this change. Project also proposes to increase the number of gated subdivisions with the, within the plan area. Of the parcels included in the tentative map, CO 1 and CO 3 are already designated as gated communities. With the amendment, the project would also gate CO 2, which is connected to CO 1, and also CO 20 and CO 22. The staff report includes an evaluation of the vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity, and the map includes features such as a pedestrian gate to allow residents of CO 20 and 21 to access the neighborhood park. The project includes amendments to three development agreements. You'll note in the planning commission memorandum that there was a correction to the amendment for West Park Federico. So it's the sixth amendment to West Park Federico, the second amendment to the Moyer Investments or Conlee Development Agreement, and the second amendment to the DF Properties Development Agreement. Given the amount of shifting units, all three development agreements require updates, including to reflect the project changes. It also includes updated language regarding well construction and recycled water facilities. For the DF Properties DA, the language regarding affordable housing agreements will be removed as the project modifications will eliminate the last remaining affordable units within that development agreement. And the Federico DA will be updated to reflect the transfer of those 38 units and their conversion to low and very-low income units. So as indicated in the staff report, negotiations on the development agreements were ongoing at the time of publication to address shortfalls in funding for the parks and bike trail fees. As the project includes a land use amendment that will reduce the number of LDR lots and increase MDR lots and HDR lots, this will result in a lower payment towards those neighborhood park and bike trail fees because the calculations are based on density in the development agreement. So following further discussion, staff and the applicant negotiated one-time contributions to those fee programs. These payments would be made to the city prior to or concurrent with recordation of the final map for parcel CO 1, and they're captured by revisions to the section shown here and in that PC memorandum that I provided to you this evening. They are included in the Conlee DA. With the payments as specified in this section, the project will make up the shortfall consistent with the terms of the development agreement. This is also reflect, the revised development agreement is included as an attachment to that memorandum. Overall, the development agreement amendments are consistent with the general plan, specific plan, and zoning ordinance and will not affect public health, safety, and welfare. The project also includes large and small lot tentative subdivision maps as part of the request. The large lot map will align with the proposed land use as well as create new large lot parcels CO 2 and FD 32A and 32B. For the small lot tentative subdivision map, 516 single-family residential lots will be created on parcel CO 1 through CO 3, as well as CO 20 through CO 22. CO 1, 2, 3, and 22 will be LDR subdivisions for a total of 229 lots. And CO 20 and 21 will be MDR subdivisions with a total of 287 lots. CO 1, 2, 3, 20, and 22 will be gated. The staff report includes an evaluation of each village, showing that adequate access is provided to each. There are special provisions for village CO 3 due to the unique configuration of the lot adjacent to the open space, including an EBA access for egress only onto Santucci and requirements for garbage bin placement for lots fronting onto stub streets. Additionally, a design review for residential subdivisions entitlement was required for modified development standards for CO 20, 21, and 22. With the modified development standards, the project is consistent with the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Finally, we have the design review for residential subdivisions that will adopt modified development standards for CO 20, 21, and 22, as well as an architectural design package. The modified development standards include reducing the front yard setback from 14 to 12 and 1/2 feet and the side yard setback from 5 to 4 feet. And this is consistent with other modifications in Sierra Vista and will accommodate the larger footprint of the single-story units. So as shown here, the architectural package for the project includes a total of 11 plan types, ranging in size from 1,400 to approximately 2,500 square feet. Each plan will come in three styles, either farmhouse, cottage, or villa, with five color palettes for each. The color palettes include neutral tones and the overall architectural package with the varied unit types, roof lines, and massing is consistent with the community design guidelines. Early notification of the project was sent to Arcona, as well as notice of the planning commission hearing. And notice of the planning commission hearing was mailed out to neighbors within 300 feet of the, all affected parcels. No comments were received on the project. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the general plan, Sierra Vista specific plan, and zoning ordinance. The required findings for each entitlement can be made. And pursuant to the provisions of SEQA, an addendum to the Sierra Vista Environmental Impact Report was prepared. No new or more severe impacts were identified as a result of the project. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission take the actions recommended on this slide, including recommending the approval of the project to the city council with the amended exhibits. And thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Shelby. Commissioners, are there any questions of Shelby or staff at this time? We'll start this end?
Sure. I just, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you and recognize the applicant for getting us this updated supplemental fee language and negotiating that and getting it to us late, but before, we had the project before us. So I appreciate staff's work on that and the applicant's. I'm recognizing the applicant's contribution here, so thank you.
Commissioner, take a deal.
I just want to make sure I understand, with regard to the fee, by under, from what I was just seeing, the dollar amount is set and then it's indexed and July 1st. So in other words, if this construction doesn't happen for a few years, the amount of the fee based upon the index is adjusted.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to clarify one thing. Because this was, we finished this at about 5:00 tonight, working this all out. One of the things that I want to point out and make sure the commission understands, and we'll do, we'll do a, we'll be more prepared for the city council hearing, but we looked at all of the land that JMC has controlled in the Sierra Vista specific plan and all of the land use changes. So this isn't, this catch-up fee isn't just for this particular, so I think that's important to note because the developer, the developer worked with us, JMC worked with us, and they, this is, this catches them up for all of the land use changes that they've done in the Sierra Vista specific plan. So it's not just for this one. So, so there, this completely catches them up. So it's, it really is a benefit to the city, the way they looked at this, very comprehensively. And yeah, it's, the way it works is, it's, the threshold for payment is prior to or at the time of recordation with that CO 1 map. Once this becomes effect, the fee becomes effective when the, when the ordinance becomes effective. And then every July 1, the construction cost index increases that apply to all development impact fees would apply to that number.
Gotcha. Okay.
So because the timing on this, the ordinance probably becomes effective after July 1 of this year. So that fee's kind of set inside. So if the fees not, if these, if these amounts aren't paid by July 1 or June 30, 2023, then whatever the construction cost index percentage increase is, this number would go up by that amount.
And that's because the fees would have gone up by that amount?
The fees would have gone up by that amount, exactly.
It's a level playing field.
Exactly.
Okay. The only other comment that I have is I, and whether this is on behalf of staff or the applicant, I appreciate the attention to the affordable housing issues and the change that allows for some low-income and very-low-income homes to be, to be built.
Mr. Brashers? I just have one question. It's not, not a comment at all, but I've noticed in other land use changes we've done in the past, we've seen the community commercial being reduced based on the absorption studies that said that those may not be as viable. This one, we actually had it go up, and I know it's not by much, it's a half acre. Is there a reason behind that or just fit in with the changes that were there or?
Yeah, and I think if you, if you recall, it's probably been a couple of years ago, but at this intersection, there was a five acre, there were two community, there were two mixed-use parcels on the, at this intersection across the, two five-acre, commercial mixed-use parcels. And we changed the land use and zoning on one of the five acres to residential at the time. So I think the applicant has gone back and they've been working on some different plans for both the high-density site and the commercial site. And just having that, that additional half acre of, not necessarily, well, depth north to south, just makes it more likely to get a commercial user.
And I'm guessing with the, the mixed-use component taken out, it might give more flexibility for some different users to come in?
I think so, yeah. And then, then we don't have to worry about that, that 40 units has been transferred to other parcels, so they were able to, so we're not losing units in the Sierra Vista specific plan, and I think it probably does. And I think, I don't know who's going to speak on the applicant, if Ryan comes up, it probably makes that site more viable for future commercial uses.
It's not a concern for me. I was just curious as to that because we've seen it go the other direction before.
Right.
So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, invite the project applicant to come forward and address the commission.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jensen and members of the planning commission. I want to thank the staff. We were going around and around just the past couple of days trying to get everything nailed down, but over the past, yeah, roughly a year, working with you guys, it's been a privilege and I appreciate all your hard work. So to your point, yes, expanding the, the commercial half a acre, we feel, figure we get some more users in there, and it's a, it's a perfect fit for extending it up to the north. And so we're hopefully, we haven't marketed yet, but we can get some end-users there, you know, soon. But with that, we ask that you guys approve the, the map and, and the, the package. And if any more questions, I'm available.
Commissioners, are there any questions that you have of the applicant at this time?
Questions?
Case.
Okay.
Go ahead and be seated. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to address the commission on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do so? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and go ahead and close the public hearing as well. Is there any final comments that the commission would like to make or questions before we look for a motion? Okay, seeing none, I look for a motion from the commission.
I'm going to make a motion.
Everyone wants to read it.
Well, I think I'm going to do the condensed version, so, and we'll see if this works, but I'll go ahead and make a motion, the, the commission, take the actions as listed in the summary recommendation as part of the planning division staff report.
That will work. The only thing is, in that, it lists the fifth amendment to the Federico, which is technically six. So I think your motion with the modification of the memo-
The modification as laid out in the memo.
Yes.
Okay. Good?
Yeah, does that work? Everyone understand the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Commissioner Brashers has made the motion and Commissioner Caparuso has seconded. Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hagan Joez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashers?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin?
Yes.
And Chair Jensen?
Yes.
So the motion is approved and there's a 10-day appeal period for this item. Okay, the last item on the agenda we have is commissioner and staff reports. And Greg, do you have anything of interest for us?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick items for you. Just to let you know, last week, the city council acted on three different projects that the, the commission had recommended. The ESTIA, that was the, the residential development on the KT 41A and B parcels out just to the east of Santucci Boulevard in the Sierra Vista specific plan. If you recall, that was a month or so ago. They approved that project. They approved all of the amendments to the Emmerich Ranch specific plan that were before the commission. And if you recall, I think it was back in either late January or early February, we brought to you a rezone for a parcel that was going to be part of the Dry Creek Greenway, Dry Creek Greenway project on Riverside that we added the, or we changed the land use and zoning to open space. They approved that general plan amendment and rezone as well. So three of the, three of the projects you recommended have been completed at city council. We do have items for the May 12 commission hearing. I don't believe we yet have items for the May 26 commission hearing, but I'll try like heck to make sure that we do so you guys can, don't miss a meeting. But that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions to staff?
I have one question, just because the project, the Campus Oaks project reminded me of it, but what kind of an impact is the organics recycling bill going to have on the commercial, I mean-
Yeah.
What is that going to look like?
It's, it's, it's tricky. So you really need, so it's a different, it's a different truck that solid waste is using to pick those up. But yeah, different projects, residential projects for sure, multifamily, commercial residential projects, so multifamily- projects for sure, multi-family, commercial residential projects, so multi-family. Basically, instead of having the trash enclosures that you see on the site plans that come before you with the two bins, you have to have three bins. So it really, yeah, it alters the, and you have to have a wider approach for our trucks.
Retro, it's not retro, I mean, it's not existing?
No, it's not, I don't believe businesses, I don't, no, you don't have to go back and, well, I don't, I-
I think they're still gonna have to collect the, their organics somehow.
They're still gonna have to collect their organics somehow.
They, you know, they're not gonna have to go back and put a third bin there.
Yeah.
But they will, I mean, they won't have to put a third, you know, bay on the enclosure, but they will have to probably have a separate bin and figure out how each restaurant's gonna handle that.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I can't, I mean, having worked in the waste industry, I don't understand how that's gonna all-
So one of the-
-come down on us.
One of the early, one of the early projects, because it had, the building permit hadn't been issued yet, the Junction Crossing project in, in historic Old Town that was, you know, has just started construction. When they went through the planning entitlements, and even when they went through their building permit and improvement plan processes, we didn't have this requirement, but because they didn't have the permits issued until this, this new regulation came into effect, we had to implement it, so we had to lose a parking stall on that project. And if you recall, that was the number-one most contentious issue associated with the project, but there was no, there was no recourse. They have to collect that. So it's, it does have an impact on how we look at site plans.
Yeah, I guess going forward is one thing, but it's, it's the, you know, modification to the existing operations and what that's gonna look like.
And I think it also transfers over to residential projects as well, because I think you're gonna be starting to see the, like a third, a smaller bin.
There's a possibility for a third bin.
For organics, for residential customers as well. So that's something that our, our environmental utilities department's looking at.
Well, I think organics can go in your green waste bin. I think organics, organics go in your green waste bin. The third bin would come in, into effect if we have to separate, if the city of Roseville is ever required to separate recycling from regular garbage.
One big bin.
Yeah, then that would be two bins, and then I think, 'cause I know in Sacramento County, in the city of Sacramento, your, your organics, they tell you to put your organics in your green waste bin. So it's, yeah, it's definitely gonna have an impact.
Thank you, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, no.
That's a good question.
No, we've been dealing with that-
About a year.
Weekly for six months or so, or, yeah.
Was it even?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Any other questions of staff from the commission? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion and second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.